Hello.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our May 11th Board Meeting. If we could please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would like to pull up the order on the annual budget hearing and regular meeting of the Kings Park Board of Education. Please be advised that this meeting is being recorded. We have some present plans to start with tonight. Dr. Egan.
And annually in Kings Park, we we honor our parent leaders. We've got our leaders of our POs, our PFAs, our booster clubs, SEPTA, and a couple of other of our parent organizations. And we've invited them here this evening to give them proper recognition that they deserve. And we thank you for your continued leadership in the community and within your groups. I'd like to ask Dr. Kobe Rooney if you could please start us off with the SEPTA Exec Board.
Thank you, Dr. Egan, and good evening, everyone. As a parent-teacher organization, the Kings Park SEPTA Executive Committee advocates for students of all ability levels throughout the entire district. They're a committed group of individuals who spend countless hours coordinating parent workshops and assisting fellow parents of students with disabilities in navigating services at district, county, and state levels. They collaborate with district and building administration on initiatives, and they hold various fundraisers to provide donations and materials and supplies for students throughout the district. I'm exceptionally grateful for their last fundraiser, which was Dog Basket fundraiser. So for anyone with puppies, it's definitely out there and on our website. This past year, our SEPTA Board amidst COVID did a tremendous job supporting students, families, and staff. They revamped their website with both user-friendly and knowledgeable applications as well as supports for parents. The SEPTA Board participated in various district committees and provided critical feedback on various initiatives. They focused on the importance of mental health, and along with building PTAs and PFAs, donated a little spot of feelings and emotion series for our K through three students. We cannot thank the SEPTA Board enough for all the hours spent organizing and supporting our students throughout the district. It's been a pleasure getting to know all of the members of the SEPTA Board and working beside them closely throughout the course of the school year. On behalf of all the students, teachers, and the district, we would like to thank Ms. Christina Hoxa, Ms. Ruby Nazario, Ms. Lori Moreno, Ms. Karen Romano, Ms. Laura Magno, Ms. Lisa Camastro, and Ms. Corey Degory for all that they continue to do for our students and staff. At this time, I would like to turn it over to my esteemed colleague, Mr. Kevin Storch, Principal at Parkview Elementary.
Thank you, Dr. Kobe Rooney. It's my pleasure to introduce to you this evening the PFA Executive Board for Parkview. Under normal circumstances, Parkview PFA members, class moms, and other visitors can be seen in our hallways on a daily basis. This school year has been so unusual that we rarely see our parents outside of a Zoom or a Google Meet. We truly miss their presence at Parkview. We're optimistic about the future and hope to return to normal soon. Regardless of this adversity, the Parkview PFA insisted on finding a way this school year. They could not accept that we had to just cancel events and activities for students. Through creativity and persistence from the PFA, the Parkview students were able to enjoy many great activities such as the pumpkin patch, the Thanksgiving feast, holly boutique, and cookie decorating, Winter Wonderland, Polar Express, the book fair, and Parp Week, the talent show, virtual bingo, and plant sales. As you can see, the Parkview PFA goes above and beyond for our students. However, they certainly do not forget about the teachers. Fundraisers have helped to purchase smart boards, document cameras, Chromebooks, P- Parkview TV equipment, air conditioners. Parkview students, though, are especially pleased with the new playground that was installed last summer as a result of the Parkview PFA efforts. I would like to introduce you to this amazing team. But first, I'd like to say thank you to our Parkview PFA for their dedication to children, their hours of hard work, and all of the energy that they have put into the students of Parkview Elementary. So it's my great honor to introduce to you Mrs. Marissa Hayes and Dana Fitzpatrick, who are our co-presidents, Rachel DeGangi and Nicolina Charamella, who are our co-vice presidents, Kathleen Dantona is our corresponding secretary, and Maren Brosniak is our recording secretary, and Mrs. Stephanie Hanley is our treasurer. So most of the Parkview Board is moving on to RJO next year, so I would like to wish all of them the best of luck moving on to RJO, and I hope that Mr. Massimo appreciates this wonderful group of parents who were coming to him as fourth graders. Thank you very much, Parkview PFA.
Okay, and I think next we have Mrs. Moreno, who's going to introduce the William T. Rogers PFA.
Good evening. I am so excited to be here tonight to introduce to you and honor our William Rogers Middle School PFA Executive Board. Our executive board has lots of new members this year. It's been so nice to work together and get to know one another. Even though it's a challenging year, our PFA has done incredible things. They hosted a beautiful holiday boutique all within our COVID regulations, just safe for kids and a nice shopping experience for them. They've hosted Spiritware Sales throughout the year, so they've supported our students who are in need throughout the year. They've been creating beautiful displays for our students, just to welcome them back to William T. Rogers Middle School, just keeping the energy high. Last week, they even hosted a beautiful staff luncheon for our Staff Appreciation Week. And they're in the midst of a spring book sale as well. So so many great things happening with our PFA this year. We're just so so blessed to work with them each day. I'd like to thank them as a group. They've just been an incredible group to work with, and I'll also introduce them each as well. And so our co-presidents this year are Jamie Lupinacci and Christine Neville. Our vice president is Erin Penangetti. Our treasurer is Jeanne Kennedy. The corresponding secretary is Caterina Panino. Our recording secretary is Kelly McGinnly, and we are just so, so grateful for this group of these parents this year. So thank you so much, everybody, and thanks for helping to keep William Rogers Middle School such a special place to be and to learn even during this really challenging year. So thank you.
And thank you, Mrs. Moreno, and the William T. Rogers PFA. Next, we have Mrs. Montocabo and the Fort Solanga PTA.
Thank you, Dr. Egan. The Fort Solanga Parent Teacher Association is a partnership between parents and educators who strive to enhance student learning and enrich the lives of the students within the school. Members of this organization go above and beyond to ensure that our children have every opportunity to enhance the positive experience they enjoy at FS. Beginning last school year, this PTA Board had to be extremely creative due to the constraints that the COVID pandemic had placed upon all of us. Many of the events and fundraisers that they ran had to be reorganized and rethought. Despite this, they managed to maintain and ensure that our children enjoyed the same cultural programming as well as receive tools to work with, such as technology, to enhance their academic development. This past year, the PTA instituted a newsletter that communicates to the parents the various activities and events that are going on within the school. This newsletter was shared on a monthly basis and was the lifeline for many of our members. This was because we were limited to online meetings and events. Beginning in September, the PTA, along with parent donations, allowed for our backlot to be repaved as well as painted with new games to play with at recess. The PTA also bestowed upon us playground equipment, and in lieu of hosting an annual fall fair, a fall fair kit was created and sold to individual families. All of the proceeds raised went directly back to our students. The FSPTA helped to ensure that our families in need received food baskets and gift cards both in the months of November and December of this past year. Our cultural program was also maintained. Programs such as Kerboom Kids and an anti-bullying assembly took place, as well as the return of Jack Hartman, sort of like the Elvis Presley of the 1950s to age five through nine. Additionally, our PARP program, or Pick a Reading Partner, was organized and hosted by a member, members of the Board. Students celebrated reading and were able to purchase books from the Scholastic Online Book Fair. We also had a veterans' drive-by parade. Our honorees were honored and acknowledged for their bravery. In December, we hosted our annual Polar Express Day, and the children were treated to cookies and milk courtesy of the Fort Solanga PTA. And also, a special fire truck arrived with Mr. and Mrs. Claus, as well as the North Pole Gang. Thank you to the following members for leading the charge in making Fort Solange Elementary School a wonderful place to be. I'd like to thank the following members for their hours of dedication to the students of Fort Solanga. To begin with, our recording secretary and cultural arts chair, Kim Yakubov, who is also going to be our Board President next year. Mrs. Melissa Rice, First Vice President and PARP organizer, and outgoing parent headed to RJO. Mr. Mus was very lucky. Mrs. Rachel Widdam, who is the Second Vice President and Manager of our Fort Solanga School Store and Future Vice President. Mrs. Danielle Byrne, who is the organizer of our Box Tops, Fall Fair, and Pancake Breakfast, and also the Third Vice President. Mrs. Janice Rosenberg, treasurer and outgoing parent headed to RJO, and is also always at every single event and just maintains our Fort Solanga PTA website. And lastly, Mrs. Kelly Farshion, our current president and leader, and many thanks for all that she has done, and of course, outgoing, we will miss her immensely. And I would be remiss if I did not mention the following additional parents who have helped. Mrs. Kathleen Sequest, Carrie Ingerson, and Lauren Gons are all very active members of the PTA. There's just too many of them to name. And from the bottom of my heart, the staff and students, thank you, ladies, for all of your hard work, countless hours. We appreciate you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Montocabo and the Fort Solanga PTA. Just so you don't think we forgot about RJO, the RJO PFO and Mr. Massimo were at Adventureland this evening. We're going to honor them at a future board meeting. What I would like to ask Mr. Huntsman, if you could introduce the parent organizations that are connected with Kings Park High School?
Absolutely. Kings Park High School is extremely lucky to be supported by a myriad of parent organizations that do everything in their power to support the programs and students of our school. These organizations are composed of parent volunteers who dedicate their time, a lot of it, to make life better for our students. I would like to begin by recognizing our robotics boosters, led by co-presidents Katie Carden-Hallie and Sheila Pascoochi, with their Board Laura Colosa, Sabrina Clumbella, and Regina Kemster. Our robotics team is led by two dedicated staff members, Mr. Sam Cruz and Mr. Kevin Hutchins. Over the years, the boosters have fueled the team by supplying tons of snacks and big dinners for long, intense hours and late nights of robotics build seasons. They have organized a number of different fundraisers such as raffles, chili cook-offs, video game tournaments to support the needs in materials, tooling, and traveling. Recently, the boosters have contributed to big-ticket items. About a year ago, we were able to give us a five-by-eight enclosed trailer that our robotics team uses for hauling robots and equipment to local and distant competitions, and most recently, a new CNC machine for designing and manufacturing advanced parts. Additionally, they have worked to create a robotics senior scholarship program, robotics boosters. Thank you very much for all that you do for our students. At this time, I would like to acknowledge our theater booster, led by Ms. Kathleen McCourt and her team of Ms. Denise DeGina, Rowan Rand, and Mr. Brian Esten. Much like our robotics boosters, the theater boosters typically work to support students that put in an inordinate amount of hours in preparation for culminating events like our drama and musical productions. Our theater boosters traditionally provide nourishment to all of our on- and off-stage performers during these long days and nights. The pandemic has obviously made this very challenging. We all look forward to typical events for our students and families, and I know the theater boosters will be there for our kids moving forward. I would also like to acknowledge our music boosters, led by President Ms. Francesca Riley and her team of Sue Baker, Jessica Galone, and Bill Lardy. We are fortunate to have such a dedicated group of parents that work to support our students in the music program. The team is constantly fundraising and communicating with our music department, seeking out ways to help our students. In the past, they have purchased instruments, equipment, as well as provided multiple scholarships each year. This year, I applaud their tenacity as they have worked to provide our students a well-deserved music dinner to honor our seniors in our Kings Park High School Music Department. Music boosters, thank you so much for all of your service to Kings Park High School. I would also like to acknowledge the work of our I would also like to acknowledge the work of our Kings Park Athletic Boosters, led by co-presidents Tracy O'Leary and Kim McGinnon. They are supported by a team of Kelly Roboto, Michelle Torrey, Jen Brozier, and Lorian Richter. In spite of the COVID-19 challenges, the ABA continued to facilitate virtual fundraisers in support of our students and programs. This year, the ABA is providing four senior scholarships that will be awarded at our upcoming Senior Scholarship Night, as well as working towards our annual summer camp. Thank you very much for all that you do. And finally, at Kings Park High School, I would like to acknowledge our absolutely amazing PFA, led by our President, Ms. Jen Brozier, and her fantastic, dynamic Board of Betty Gabino, Rowan Rand, Jeanne Kennedy, and Eileen Green. Kings Park High School would like to thank our PFA for financially supporting everything from Awareness Weekend to Donut Costumes. Check out our Twitter account if you're interested in seeing that, to providing much-needed staff recognition days earlier in the year, this past week, and again, they have something planned for June. Finally, I would like to thank them for working collaboratively with me to celebrate and acknowledge our class of 2021. It all started with a phone call before Christmas Vacation. The idea of giving students a Hershey kiss and kissing 2020 goodbye. And our team of parents and volunteers have not stopped since. I'm very proud to have worked with this amazing group of parents whose sole purpose and focus has been to support our students and seniors. We're not done yet. We have a few more tricks up our sleeve. In the meantime, thank you so much, Mrs. Brozier and your team. I love working with you guys. You're a great sounding board for all the different challenges that we face, and we overcome at Kings Park High School, and I couldn't ask for a better group of boosters to support our Kings Park High School. Thank you.
And thank you so much, Mr. Huntsman. We appreciate it. And last but not least, we have our Council of Schools. Our Council of Schools in Kings Park truly serves as the backbone for all the organizations that we just recognized here this evening. They have monthly meetings that help to facilitate communication amongst and within all our various parent organizations. They sponsor a pie fundraiser in and around Thanksgiving, and then the Pie Day Contest, which is an annual event every March 14th. You've probably heard many of their names either once or maybe even twice this evening because many of them serve on other parent organization boards. A special thank you to Caterina Panino, the Council of Schools President, Nicolina Charamella, Council Schools Vice President, GN Martinson, Recording Secretary, Cynthia Grimley, Corresponding Secretary, and Betty Gabino, Treasurer. And I would also like to personally thank Betty, who was recently recognized not only for being a leader in our community, but for also her service to our country and the fact that she's a veteran. So congratulations and thank you to Betty and all our parent leaders. You fundraise for us, you support us, you support the kids, and we really appreciate all of your efforts. Thank you, thank you, and thank you.
If I could just echo all the sentiments from everyone tonight, I don't I don't even know how to begin to thank you for all of the service that you do for our district. The many hours that you put in, it's just it's just amazing, the work that you do and how much you contribute to our school district. We very much appreciate all that you do. Thank you very much. So now we're going to go to student recognitions.
Okay, I see lots of student faces on Zoom this evening, and we're excited that we get to honor all your accomplishments. We're going to start with the high school and Mr. Huntsman, who has three very special recognitions to make. Mr. Huntsman.
Thank you. I'm going to start by recognizing a student who achieved excellence at a DECA State Business Competition. So James McCormick has achieved state-level competition top-10 testing and also achieved a top-10 score in the category of sports marketing. DECA is an international organization that prepares emerging leaders in all fields of business. It has three levels of competition: regional, state, and national. In order for James to have made it to the DECA State Competition, which was held virtually in February, he had to place in the top 10 or 20 on his business test at the regional, at the February Regional Competition. James placed above the 100 or more students taking the exam. Recently, at the state competition, James took another exam online and then uploaded two virtual roleplays. James placed as a top-10 winner in testing and overall top-10 winner in his category, sports marketing, competing statewide. It's a tremendous honor for James, also for our DECA program, Miss Portnoy, and for Kings Park High School at large. We're very proud of you, James. Congratulations. I also have the privilege this evening of recognizing two absolutely fantastic, dynamic students. They're being recognized this evening for their academic aptitude, but really, these are two absolutely amazing, well-rounded young people that just have everything in front of them. So proud to be introducing our Kings Park High School valedictorian and salutatorian here this evening. I'll start with our salutatorian. Amanda Dynan will be graduating with a cumulative weighted average of 105.72. She's an officer for the National Honor Society, the PR Secretary for the Art Honor Society, and a member of the Spanish Honor Society. She plays on the varsity lacrosse team and is involved in the peer support and C's club. Additionally, Amanda tutors in chemistry, calculus, and history, and is the Secretary of the Nissabog River State Park Student Board, working to make local improvements within her community. Additionally, she has done research in psychology relating generational social media usage to anxiety levels and received an AP capstone diploma as a result. She is recognized as a national AP scholar and has received the Suffolk Zone Senior Physical Education Leadership Award. We are extremely proud of Amanda, and Amanda will be majoring in chemical engineering this coming fall at the University of California in Los Angeles. Amanda, we are so proud of you. Congratulations. Well done, Amanda. Also have the privilege of recognizing our valedictorian. Zach is a wonderful young man. Zachary Cant will be graduating Kings Park High School with a cumulative average of 105.90. He's a national AP scholar and a commended student in the National Merit Scholarship Program. He is the founder and president of our Kings Park High School Chess Club, the president and captain of the Varsity Quiz Bowl Team, and a co-president of the Independent Science Research Program. His research in the fields of ecology and engineering over the past few years include designing a novel plastic-based adhesive trap for the control of, and I apologize, Zach, of stomosis calcytrines population in animal housing facilities, basically little bugs that annoy the animals that live there, a project for which he was awarded second place in engineering at the Regional Junior Science and Humanity Symposium. Zachary is a dedicated oboist, who has been a member of several youth ensembles, including the Metropolitan Youth Orchestra and the Long Island Youth Orchestra. He performed as the principal oboist for both Skemia, Wind Ensemble, and Orchestra, and was selected for the Niskine Orchestra. Within Kings Park High School, he has served as principal oboe in the Symphonic Wings for the past three years, accompanied the concert band as a pianist, performed as a clarinetist in the marching band, and played a supporting lead role in Kings Park High School's production of Mary Poppins. He's also a third-degree black belt in Taekwondo and a USCF-ranked competitive chess player. This fall, Zach will be majoring in Biology on a pre-med track, studying music at Emory University. Another absolutely dynamic young man, so well-rounded, so intelligent, but even better, such a wonderful, wonderful, kind young man. I would wish Zach all the best, and congratulations on being our Kings Park High School valedictorian. Congratulations, Zach.
Thank you so much, Mr. Huntsman. We're going to move on to our science recognitions this evening. I think for the most part, the rest of our recognitions all connect with science and our science fairs. And we have some art recognitions and a few other recognitions mixed in from the middle school. So we're going to move on to Fort Solanga Elementary School and Mrs. Montocabo.
For the three high school students that we just recognized, I just want to say, I'm sorry, I couldn't wait. We have so many young students tonight from our elementary school being recognized, and you three are such great role models for them, and I thank you for all that you're doing. And I want all the boys and girls on there to look up to these three students and know someday you can be a role model when you're at Kings Park High School forever, moving the kids. Thank you. Just wanted to say that.
Okay, thank you. In recognition of this year's science fair, again, we had to think outside of the box. It wasn't your traditional science fair, but both Mr. Rubin and Mrs. Iraachi did not let us down. They organized a phenomenal fair. Like I said before, really thinking outside of the box, we ended up having close to 70 participants, which was phenomenal despite the fact that we did not have the typical parent viewing. But, you know, they just, they wrote the book when it comes to organizing and executing a science fair. But congratulations to the following students. I'm going to start with kindergarten. For third place, John Finerty, Shark Do Sharks Float. For second place, The Great Egg Experiment by Ryan McDonald. And first place, What Brand Pops Best by Nicholas Delaval. First grade, our third-place winner, Sonic Geometry by Dylan Gomez. Second place, Let's Get Rolling by Lucas Lindsay. And first place, Is Your Mouth Cleaner Than a Dog's by Evelyn Van Winkle. Second grade, third place, Can Robots Create Art for People, Sidney Martinson. Second place winner for second grade, Soccer Striker by Summer Clark. Second-place winner for second grade, Soccer Striker by Summer Clark. And first place, second grade, Dr. Haley's Energy Moves by Haley Schmidt. And our third grade winners, third place, Coins vs. Bills, Which Has More Bacteria by Patrick O'Donnell. Second place, Is Your Sunscreen Working by Agnes Van Winkle. And first place, Can You Hear Me Through My Mask by Emerson Gata. And I should mention that we are looking forward to the end of this month, where all of our first-place winners will be competing for the Brookhaven Science Fair at the elementary level. And we look forward to hearing about their successes from that fair. Congratulations to all of our winners. And everyone received a certificate already, so they have them home with them.
Great job. And we're going to pass it off to Mr. Storch, Principal of Parkview Elementary School.
Thank you, Dr. Egan. I'd like to echo a lot of what Mrs. Monticabo said. We had just a lot of really great science fair projects this year. I'd like to recognize Mrs. Maroni for all of her hard work in organizing the science fair, as well as all the parents who are out there supporting and their behind-the-scenes helping kids to create these amazing projects. So I also would like to start with kindergarten and work backwards from there. Starting with our third-place winner, Revenge of the Stickiness by Jack Sadington. Our second-place winner, Gummy Bear Science by Cristiano Rodriguez. And our first-place winner in kindergarten is Rockets and Reaction Rates by Henry Scott Edwards. In first grade, our third-place winner was Liliana San Gennario with Salt Crystals Overnight. Our second-place winner was Logan Fligman with Ready, Set, Go. And our first-place winner in first grade was Sheersham McGinn with Suds or Ducks. In second grade, third-place winner was What Liquids Do to Your Teeth? by Katie Hennessy. Our second-place winner was Put Your Heart Into It by Jeremy Katz. And our first-place winner was a partnership between Frankie Rodriguez and Thomas Lombardo, What Bat Has the Most Pop? And our third-grade winners were: Third grade, third place, Oil Spill by Olivia Fligman. Second-place winner by Gianna Kelly was Keep It Hot. And our first-place winner in third grade was Spinning Pin Wheels by Mackenzie Carnes. Outstanding. Congratulations to all of our science fair winners. If I may, Dr. Egan, I know that I have a couple more students on the call tonight who are McDonald's winners. And we recognized them today also. That was Gianna Gaines and... All right, Mr. Gaines. Just to let you know, this morning, live on...
Sorry.
That's okay. This morning on TV, we announced live, and I presented all of the kids this morning certificates. The whole school got to see everyone receive their awards this morning at Parkview. So congratulations again, boys and girls. You did a great job. Back to you, Dr. Egan.
Great job, students, and thank you, Mr. Storch. And last but not least, we have several different awards at William T. Rogers Middle School. So I'd like to introduce Dr. Moreno.
Thank you, Dr. Egan. It's so great to hear about all these young scientists. I can't wait until you guys get up to the middle school. I hope you just keep that love for science alive. I can't wait to see what you do next. So we are also excited tonight to honor our young scientists and also some of our artists as well. First, we have two students that were recently honored in the 31st Annual New York State Art Teachers Association Legislative Student Art Exhibition. The New York State Art Teachers Association, in partnership with NISID and in collaboration with our New York State legislators, organized this exhibit annually. The goals of the exhibit are to showcase our art programs and to give our young artists an opportunity to receive statewide recognition. The legislative exhibit is the flagship event for Youth Art Month. And we celebrate the visual arts in that month, and we're encouraging just support for quality art programs and promoting art material safety. So we have two students whose work was recently celebrated, and this exhibition is actually online. And we're going to post the link up for our families after the meeting tonight, so that you can check out the young students' art. It's beautiful. And if you can't wait, you can just check out the New York State Arts Teachers Association website and just look for the legislative exhibit link on there. You can just check out their art. Those two students are eighth graders, and they are Ava Martinson and Sophia Marquez. Congratulations, girls. Thanks for representing us on the state level. We also have some McDonald's art contest winners as well. And each year, the McDonald's over in East Northport celebrates our student artists by creating a theme in which our young artists create artwork to support that theme. And it's always creative. This display is beautiful. And their artwork will be on display for the next year over at that McDonald's. So if you're in that area, stop by and check out all our Kings Park artists. This year's theme was First Responders, and what a great way to honor our heroes this year by creating artwork in their honor. We had lots of winners from William T. Rogers Middle School. We're excited to announce. In sixth grade, first place went to Taran Boylan Thorpe. Second place for grade six was Ash Kruger. Third place, grade six, was Mackenzie Creel. In seventh grade, we had a first-place winner, Olivia Lachner. In third place for seventh grade, Evelyn Palladino. And we had an honorable mention in seventh grade, which was Suri Guadalupe Peña. In eighth grade, we had a first-place winner, Alexandra Soslov. In second place for grade eight, Mia Lupinachi. And we also had a third-place winner in grade eight, which was Riley Doyle. So congratulations to all of our McDonald's art winners as well. And now we're going to honor our scientists. We are excited to also just have the opportunity to honor the work of our science students this year. It definitely was a different kind of science fair. We had to reimagine it. It wasn't our usual expo in our gym, but it was online, and our students created beautiful presentations in the form of slideshows, and they went online for our families to enjoy. What was really nice about this is that we were able to blend our remote students and our in-person students and really honor all of their hard work. Before I list the students, I also just want to thank Mr. Harris, Ms. Lavacek in our main office, and our science teachers for all of their work behind the scenes on this great science fair. So nice work, everybody. So let's first honor our Scientific Discovery Project winners. We have three in the eighth grade. The first place was Ashley Fredrickson. Second place was Allison Coiro, and in third place, Jessica Black. In our engineering design projects, we also had three eighth-grade winners. In first place, Violet Page. In second place, Benjamin Bluth. And in third place, Joseph Angelillo. For our Scientific Discovery Projects, we have four honorable mentions representing all three grades. In sixth grade, Adam Kamen. In seventh grade, Ava Grimley. And in eighth grade, Sebastian Guadalupe Peña and Alexandra Soslov. So congratulations to all of our winners. Our students also received their certificates in school, and hopefully you get a nice photo opportunity at home tonight. Really excited to celebrate all of you guys. So thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, everyone. I just want to say that we have such an amazing student body. It's just wonderful to see all of the awards that have been given out to the children. We're just very lucky to have such talent in our district. And I just want to go back to the high school and congratulate James on his DECA State Business Competition. And of course, Amanda and Zachary. You've listened to the accomplishments of these students, and I just sit here, I'm tired. I get tired just hearing all the things that they do. I just find it amazing. We are just so very proud of you. And congratulations on all of your achievements. And I do want to also say that, it's been mentioned a couple of times tonight, this has been a very different year, and people have been very creative and worked very hard to make sure our students have had every experience that they should have in school. Just thank you to everybody for all of your hard work. So now we are going to move on to our annual budget hearing. Dr. Egan?
Okay. Okay, good evening again, everybody. Tonight is the last presentation in a series of presentations that has been the development of the 2021-2022 budget. Unlike many districts, we actually begin the budgeting process in December. It's an extremely long and in-depth process where we go through specific pieces of the budget on specific nights. And we work through the months of December and January. In January, the governor typically will release his executive budget. And then through the months of February and March, the governor will negotiate with members of the state assembly and senate. And finally, a budget is released on or about April 1st. You might recall back in March, we were still looking at a sizable budget gap of about $437,000. Thankfully, because of a few positive things that occurred between then and now, I am able to present a budget that the community can vote on next Tuesday night, May 18th. It's about a $98 million budget. It has a budget-to-budget increase of 1.6%. And obviously, at this point, we have no budget gap whatsoever. The... The budgeting process is not only money, but also other things that might be introduced into budget bills. In particular, on the bottom, I'll get into a few of the things that were rejected or eventually ended up in the budget cycle. But we were, we more or less had it on an on-time budget this year. We received our final aid run on April 6th. The good thing for New York State schools and Long Island in particular is that the economy has significantly turned around. The past year, in addition to everything else that we've been dealing with on the financial end, the state was having some significant issues, and school districts were being threatened with the possibility of withholding as much as 20% of school aid, which would have been catastrophic for Kings Park. A 20% reduction would have been about $2 million. Thankfully, the economy is in much better shape, and there was a record investment in K-12 schools this year and a pledge to continue to expand the largest portion of aid, which is foundation aid, over the next three years, which is very good because that supports a little bit more long-term fiscal planning for school districts. It's often difficult, if not impossible, for school districts to plan long-term because budgeting is a year-to-year process in New York. But knowing that there will be possibly for the next three years a pledge to continue to increase foundation aid is very good. Regionally, Long Island schools, as a region, did well. And Long Island schools received approximately a 13% increase in aid. We were not that lucky in Kings Park, but we did get a little bit of an increase, and I'll get to that a little bit more in a minute. Rejected in the budget was the governor's proposal to consolidate 11 different aid categories into what the governor was going to call services aid, and then he would have control over whether or not that would increase from year to year or not. We were really worried that governor control over that piece of aid could be problematic, and we're thankful that through our legislative work and advocacy that that proposal was rejected. Also, it was a little bit of a shell game in terms of star property tax relief reimbursements, and we're glad that that was rejected. And addressed in the budget, which is very good for school districts, was transportation aid between March and June of last year, when school districts were not necessarily transporting students, but were transporting meals and supplies and Chromebooks to students. And again, those last three things were the result of advocacy, the board and I and other groups behind the scenes, making sure that those things were addressed in budget bills. So since March, a couple of things have happened. We've heard a little bit more about Federal Rescue Plan Act or ARP money, which is going to come to school districts, Kings Park included. NISID, the New York State Education Department, indicated that we would have some final information and details by the end of April. We're just starting to get more information on what that money can be used for. Our allocation in ARP money is about $1 million. That's going to allow us to do better in some areas that include mental health support, learning loss, and things of that nature. The good thing about that money is we don't have to spend it right away. We have that money to support us for approximately three years, which is good. Again, we did see an increase in foundation aid, although not huge. We did get about a 2.1% increase or $231,000, which helped us to close our budget gap. And then the thing that helped us to completely close our budget gap and bring our budget to the finish line was a building aid adjustment that we received on April 6th. The district has been diligently trying to get this old building aid from the state for a little more than 10 years now. And it's aid from four years, from '06, '07, and then the three years following that, due to some stick-to-tiveness on the part of our business office and our Board of Education supporting our efforts. We were finally able to get that aid, which was owed to us, and that allowed us to bring our budget to fruition with no gap whatsoever. The budget focuses on four really important things. Number one, our students have missed out on so much. After the past 14 months, we did not want to cut a single thing from the budget. We wanted to leave everything intact, and that was goal number one. Goal number two was to lower the tax levy impact on our residents. When we began the budget process, the tax levy increase was approximately 2.62%. We were able to bring it down by applying various funds, that I'll point out in a minute, to get the tax levy increase below 2% to 1.99, which is one of the lowest rates we've had in the past several years. We have one additional social worker in the budget and various mental health supports that we've talked about publicly, the Ruler Program, which we're going to institute next year and a few other odds and ends. We will have social workers that will be dedicated on a secondary level at RJO, William T., and Kings Park High School. When I began as superintendent about seven years ago, we had one social worker, K-12. And thanks to the support of the board and the focus that the district governance team has had on mental health, we should have at least four social workers for September. And most likely, using the federal money, we will have one social worker per school next year that will be dedicated for tackling some mental health issues. that will be dedicated for tackling some mental health issues at each building, which is greatly appreciated. We have some, some learning loss activities and supports that are built into the budget and will also be expanded on with that federal money that I spoke about a few minutes ago. We gave a detailed presentation on April 27th regarding the, the various pieces of that learning loss plan. And last but not least, in order to support a safe and more typical classroom structure in September, we took a really close look at class size and were able to maintain or in some cases, do a little better there. And I'll go through it quickly. The budget also includes some, some resources for security. We have cybersecurity protections, knowing that ransomware is, is a very real thing today for school districts. And we might have read about some, some ransomware issues in, in the paper, even within the last week. We have technology upgrades, STEAM-related programs, advanced placement courses. We actually have two additional advanced placement courses that are going to be instituted at the high school next year. We have support for our mathematics, reading program, continued support in the arts, particularly our partnership with Huntington Arts Council, employee professional development, our typical classroom and instructional supplies and equipment, character education work, enhancing and supporting students with disabilities and English language learners. We're excited that we're going to be able to get our adult ed program back up and running in the fall. And again, we, we, we did not have to eliminate any instructional positions through the budgetary constraints. We're able to do this and bring to the finish line a budget with one of the lowest tax levy and budget to budget increases in the last couple of years. So here, here's where we are at this point. We got our, our revenue column completely filled in with our state aid and our tax levy. And everything is nice and balanced. We have our revenue projections and our, our tax levy increase at 199, budget to budget increase of 1.6. And I'd like to point out in, in the middle of this grid that we did apply 400 to 6,000 of debt service reserve, 200,000 of ERS reserve and 175,000 of workers' comp reserve. So even though we did get some additional money from the state, we did feel it necessary to apply some reserve funds to this budget again, so we could make all these things happen and to keep the tax rate as low as we could. Sorry about that, my mouse is giving me issues. This is a, a quick historical look at our budget for the last 10 or 11 years for comparison purposes. We, we hope our, our budget is successful. I do need to point out that if a contingent budget would need to be adopted, the tax levy for next year would need to be identical as the tax levy this year, which would result in approximately a one and a half million dollar reduction that would need to happen somewhere in the budget. Again, we, we hope that this doesn't happen, but I am required to point this out. One last important remaining date is next Tuesday, May 18th. Voting is at Kings Park High School. The polls open at 6:00 AM, they close at 9:00 PM. You can pull around to the back of the high school and enter the back of the Kings Park High School gym. And I appreciate your time and support. Please just remember to come out and vote a week from tonight on May 18th. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Egan. I just wanted to ask on the federal money, the American Rescue Plan Act, that money has specific uses only, right? There are several areas where we can use the money and only for those areas, right?
Correct. There, um, those funds are, are largely believed to be restricted to certain items, two of which are mental health and learning loss.
Right.
We are waiting for the, the details behind what we can and can't use that money for. We were told we would have it by the end of April. We're just starting to receive a little bit more information. And there are webinars that are coming up where we hope to learn a little bit more about that. The good news is that, that money doesn't expire until 2023. So we, we have some time and the ability to put a, a very detailed plan together with how we want to use that money.
Thank you. So I just wanted to say that I, I feel that this is a very responsible budget. I hope that the community will support, support this budget. There was a lot that went into making sure that we put the most fiscally sound and responsible budget together. I also, Mr. Bianco couldn't be with us tonight. He had a prior obligation, but I did speak to him today. And he just wanted me to pass along that he supports the process as well as where we landed with this budget. If anybody else has anything?
Yeah, if I may, just along the same lines. So appreciate everything from Dr. Egan and the business office, the time and efforts that went into getting this budget. Because it was, it was tough, it was nerve-wracking at, at certain times. But I think it's a very, very responsible and solid budget, which I encourage the community to support on May 18th. But I, I was just making a list of everything that is included in this budget. And especially that we were able to maintain all the arts, the athletics and extracurricular activities, which many districts have had to hold, a, a, as well as some of their staffing over the last year. So I encourage everybody to vote yes for this budget. Thank you.
I also would like to echo the same sentiments. They have been on the board for the number of years that I have with a board here. We always say we put kids first. And this year, like all other years, we put the budget, keeping in mind kids first. This year, as we've said many times, it's been a little different. And as always, we are fiscally responsible by being able to do both this year and maintain, not only maintain, but add on some areas. As with every, you know, for, for the kids. I'll just use the same word again, it's a very sound budget, very responsible budget. Many people were involved. And again, like my other board members here, I also would ask you to support the budget, support our kids, and keep that Kings Park pride. Thank you, everyone.
So we have our last presentation of the evening in Russell Pre-K, Dr. Egan.
Go ahead and share my screen again. Okay, when when we received our final state aid runs, we were, we were fortunate that included in our state aid run was something that we had never seen before, which was funding for universal pre-kindergarten. So I want to take a few minutes this evening and talk about what, what universal pre-kindergarten, or commonly called UPK, is and what we might be able to do with the money that's allocated for UPK for Kings Park next year. So universal pre-kindergarten, again, sometimes called UPK, is a voluntary program for both school districts and families. And it's rooted in the belief that all children should have access to a pre-kindergarten academic and socially appropriate experience. And the goal of UPK is to be able to provide a program that is free for those who choose to attend. UPK is governed by education law. And we have a state-administered UPK program right here in New York State. And the law defines an eligible child as a, a resident who is, who will be four years of age on or before December 1st of the school year in which they, they would enroll in the pre-K program and be first eligible to enter public school kindergarten commencing the following year. Programs do generally follow New York State curriculum. There is, just like we have next-generation curriculum in kindergarten through 12th grade, there is next-gen pre-K curriculum as well. So in, in the New York State budget for next year, the, the state has allocated $970 million for what they're calling UPK programs. And then an additional $90 million for expansion funding. Districts like Kings Park were, were, received notice in early April of their allocation. We got that through our, our aid run, which the state provided. Kings Park, again, has never received UPK monies from the state in the past. However, under the expansion funding, we could potentially receive a little over $275,000 to provide up to 51 UPK full-day slots for next year, which would fund roughly three classes between 15 and 18 students. The expansion funding does support only full-day slots for four-year-old students. Full-day programs have to operate five hours a day, five days a week for at least 180 days in the year. The district, ever since we, we discovered that we did have this funding in, in our state aid for next year, we've been researching this exciting new potential for our community. What education law requires is that school districts use at least a portion of the funding to work with and contract with one or more that are, they're called eligible agencies or childcare providers in the local facility to provide the instructional component of the program. This is typically done through a competitive selection process that involves what we call the request for proposal, or RFP. School districts are then required to submit an application to the New York State Education Department's Office of Early Learning by July 31st of their intent to run a UPK program for the following year. Just some additional information. Again, eligibility is, is limited to that of students who would turn four years old next year on or before December 1st. And then those students would need to be first eligible to enter kindergarten the following year in September. The program is free for attendees and does include lunch. What happens, and again, this is governed by education law, if we have more than 51 children who express interest in registering for the program, the district is required to hold a lottery system to determine which children would be eligible to then enroll and attend. A waitlist is then established to fill any vacancies that might come up during the course of the school year. The program could be housed within a Kings Park Central School District school or building, or it could be hosted at an agreed-upon location within the Kings Park community. Transportation would be the responsibility of the parents or guardians. The school district would not be providing transportation for UPK. There's some, some helpful links that I included in, in the presentation, which will be posted to the website, including an FAQ that is, is particularly helpful in understanding a couple of other aspects of, of UPK. And that's, that's a really quick overview of UPK in, in New York and where we're looking to take things here in Kings Park.
Thank you, Dr. Egan. I just have a question about the funding. So this federal money is well, is the funding going to continue indefinitely? Is there an end date for it? And if so, what happens to the program? How do we, how do we fund it after that?
So it, it, it's a good question. So districts typically will get an allocation. And if, if you do the math, it's $5,400 per seat. So if you do $5,400 times 51, you'll get that $275,400 figure that I included earlier. The $5,400 per student allotment has not changed in probably 15 or 16 years. It's been frozen at that amount. If you do the math, funding, funding a program for $5,400 for full day is a little challenging. One, one concern is obviously that, you know, may, maybe the state is not committed to sustainability in UPK. It, it does appear that this is pretty high on the Board of Regents' agenda and the state legislature's agenda in terms of funding UPK moving forward. Of course, that agenda could change over time. But at least for the foreseeable future, we do have the potential resources to be able to research and hopefully be able to provide three small classes of UPK here in Kings Park next year.
With the hope that that funding would continue.
Correct, correct.
Do you have any other questions from the board?
I just had one. You said it was for 51 students to make that, those monies go further. Are we able to reduce the size of the, the population or did it mandate it as 51 students?
So we, we can only get funding for a maximum of 51 students. We do think we could potentially support three classes in district if needed. We do have a, a little bit of space at our two primary buildings at Parkview and Fort Talanga, which would certainly be a very good option for us. We would have to see if any of the potential agencies in Kings Park would offer their site as a potential site for UPK. That might be mutually beneficial and something that, that we would have to look at. But we, we do feel we have the space to go to 51 in district buildings if needed. In district buildings if needed. So going going to fifty-one isn't an issue, but we would be capped at that amount in terms of funding.
I also just have two questions, Dr. Egan. Um, one of it was about the state aid funding. This is in, this is separate compared to the budget we're putting forward. And will not impact for the next three years our budget that we're looking at.
Co- correct. The the only, um. You know, there there are there are always some some hidden costs that go with these programs. Um, one of the costs that probably won't impact us for next year would be the lunches. So typically, the school districts would would make lunch available for UPK at no cost for full-day students. Um, it does look like the federal program is gonna continue into next year. Um, so we wouldn't be paying for the lunches. Um, the federal government would pay for the lunches. Um, which is good. At at some point, that might go away and and we would we would be on the hook for for lunch. Um, you know, but but gen- generally speaking, um, it it shouldn't really cost the district much. Um, but there are always a few hidden hidden costs that go with any program like this. And it. It's money that's in our state aid run that can only be used for UPK. It can't be used for for anything else, so it doesn't affect next year's budget at all. Other than we have the opportunity, if we want to. To to venture into the the UPK uh area with with this additional resource.
From an educational point of view, um, we always know that early intervention is best. Is this open, I know you said this is open to all. I know that universal is open to all, but however, is preference given to students who might have. A speech or language or any.
Yeah, we think that's a that's a great question, Mrs. DeFord. Um. You know, one of one of the, one of the philosophical struggles that I that I have with UPK is that. Um, districts actually can't choose which students could potentially attend. So you you would want, and UPK is really meant. To be provided for students who could not afford to attend. A pre-kindergarten uh experience. However, um. We we can't limit interest to only families who who could not afford. So potentially, any family who's interested in in a in a in a free offering could put their name in. For uh the lottery. And we literally, if there if there are a hundred. Uh, student names that come forward, we would put a hundred student names in a hat and pick fifty-one of them. Who may not necessarily be the nearest families in the school district. Um, but we would need to offer those families the UPK seat first. Um, which which is a little frustrating, but that is um, it it's written right into the law that we would need to follow.
And these and the district would be hiring the teachers. They would be Kings Park teachers?
Great question. They they would actually be employed by the agency that we're gonna work with. Um, they would need to be certified teachers. And for each class up to eighteen students, it's one certified teacher and one assistant. So there would be two people in that class of fifteen to eighteen students. But most likely, they would be employees of whoever that that agency is that we're gonna contract with. Um, I can tell you that there there are very limited agencies in in Kings Park that currently do this. Um, there's three I can think of, or actually two that are based in Kings Park and then, um. One that's based in Smithtown that I I do know provide UPK services and it, you know, would likely be one of those three. Uh, groups. But we're currently working on an RFP, a Request for Proposal, which may go out um as early as tomorrow. If if this is something that the board is is interested in in uh administration to continue pursuing. And we would look to get that agency. Um, locked in pretty quickly because we need to get those students registered and and get parents ready for September.
Yeah, I I understand that the uh application is due by uh the end of July. Uh, but I was just curious about uh establishing a curriculum for these students. Does that come from the from the state? Or is that something that the district can develop that can be uh based on the needs of the individuals? How how would that go? Be handled?
So, great question. What we would do is, um, we would put in our RFP. That the curriculum needs to be the the state pre-kindergarten next-generation standards and curriculum. And you want it to be that curriculum because that curriculum connects with your kindergarten.
Right.
Uh, state curriculum. And you want it to be as seamless as possible, so we would put that right into the RFP that the agency has to administer that curriculum.
Any other questions? Alright, um. So before we proceed with public comments for voting items, um. The board does have a statement that we wanna read. Um. The Kings Park School Board does not condone the defacing or vandalism of election signs. This is not what our community is about. If anyone has any information on the disappearance and defacing of signs, we encourage you to report that information to the police. We have, you know, that we've been made aware of some things that have been going on in the community and, um. It's it's upsetting that this is happening in Kings Park. So, um. Hopefully, this will be the end of it and everyone can. Go on with campaigning in a civil and friendly manner. So now we're gonna move on to public comments for agenda items only. Board of Education will hear public comments that address voting items on tonight's agenda only at this time. Speakers must state their first and last names to the district clerk and then address their comments to the board. Comments by any individual may not exceed three minutes. A visible timer will be used to monitor this time limit. The public comment sections of this meeting will not exceed thirty minutes in total. In fairness to all, speakers who exceed the three-minute limit and do not finish when asked will have their microphone muted. Due to confi- confidentiality concerns, the board does not permit the speakers to raise issues concerning a specific student. Or a specific personnel matter. Such concerns should be presented to the superintendent after the board meeting. So at this time, we will take public comments that address voting items only. If anyone has a comment, please raise your. Your um icon or. I'm not seeing anyone. Anyone see anything?
We did.
Okay. So we will move on to our consent agenda, approval of the April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one minutes. Um, I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second. For those in favor?
Aye.
Resolve that the Board of Education approves the minutes from the April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one regular board meeting and BOS's vote and election. Um, next, we have our second reading of revised and new policies, Dr. Egan.
Okay, we have, um. Eight policies that the board has been reviewing over the last several months. Uh, one of the primary functions of our district governance team is to periodically update and review policy. We have uh six of the policies connect with a recent update to the United States Department of Education. Uh, Title IX of the Education Amendment Act of nineteen seventy-two. In particular, Policy thirteen thirty, Appointments and Designations by the Board. Uh, this one is is really just a wording change. Uh, on page two, Compliance Officer was changed to Civil Rights Compliance Officer. For consistency of terminology and uh connections with other other board policies. Um, any questions from the board on Policy thirteen thirty? We also have, um, Policy seventy-four twenty, Sports and the Athletic Program. Last updated in twenty fifteen. And again, just some minor wording changes based on that amendment to Title IX. Any questions with seventy-four twenty? We have Policy fifty-six seventy, which is Records Management. This policy changed slightly because the um the manual, the retention and disposal schedule changed. Um, now, New York has has one manual that governs when documents can be disposed of. Which was adopted by the by the board back in April. So this policy needed to be updated to reflect the change in that actual disposal schedule. Any questions with fifty-six seventy? Okay, moving on, we have. Policies thirty-four twenty, Non-Discrimination and Anti-Harassment in the School District. Sixty-one twenty, Equal Employment Opportunity. Eighty-one thirty, Equal Educational Opportunities. And seventy-five fifty-two, Dignity for All Students Act, better known as DASSA. And these were all relatively minor changes, again, to align with that change in regulation for Title IX. Any questions from the board with those four policies? And last but not least, um, a a new policy that is also a required policy in New York State. It's uh fifty-six thirty-three, Gender Neutral Single Occupancy Bath- Bathrooms. This new policy was developed in response to New Education Law, Section four oh nine M. Which became effective on March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one. And this education law requires that the board of every school district, BOS's and charter school. Develop policies and procedures requiring that all single occupancy bathroom facilities. Are designated as gender neutral for use by no more than one occupant at a time. Um, so for example, we do have some single occupancy bathrooms. Uh, mostly on the faculty and staff level in some of our buildings that are currently labeled. Faculty male and faculty female. Uh, these bathrooms will be, um, the signage will be changed out and they will be simply labeled as bathrooms moving forward. And that's Policy fifty-six thirty-three.
Thank you, Dr. Egan. Um, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
For those in favor?
Aye. But I may just say, uh, it's nice to see this in a much more abstract form than what the policy committee went over. Uh, which is much more uh illuminous, to say the least. But it was, uh, we did go over it line by line, uh, and there was a lot of lines. Thank you.
Okay. Resolve that the Board of Education approves the second reading and adoption of the revised and new policies listed below. Um, next is Personnel Schedule, Dr. Dr. Craig.
Uh, good evening. Uh, very brief personnel schedule this evening. Uh, one item of note, we do have the retirement of Mr. Peter Scott. School bus driver who will be retiring at the end of June. Uh, so we'll be able to recognize Mr. Scott and all of our retirees at our next board meeting on June eighth. And that's the personnel schedule.
Thank you, Dr. Craig. I will make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
For those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Donation of gifts. Um. I will make a motion to approve. As per di- wait, well, as per district policy, all donations must be approved by the board, so I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
For those in favor?
Aye.
Resolve that the Kings Park Central School District Board of Education gratefully accepts the following donations. The Kings Park High School PFA is donating Catering for Awareness Weekend, value of donation one thousand dollars. Mr. Vincent Al- Albanese is donating a used gymnastic balance beam to the Kings Park High School. Besta is donating five hundred dollars to the robotics program. Kings Park Salutes will be donating a number of American flags and flag poles to be installed at the Kings Park High School and RJO Intermediate School. Prior to a special cerema- ceremony to commemorate the twentieth anniversary of September eleventh. See attached the details. The final value of this donation will depend on the number of flags sponsored by members of the Kings Park community. Total value of donations to date through the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year is fifty thousand five hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Dr. Egan, you have, um, a short presentation on this this last donation for Kings Park Salutes.
Yes, thank, thank you, Mrs. Nally. We 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 have a really exciting opportunity that presented itself. Um, a a a few weeks ago, we have, uh. Really three amazing people in our community. We have Serena Barberite and Eileen Cristiano. Um, who have really championed the twentieth commemoration of the anniversary of nine eleven. And are looking to partner with the district to erect some flags. That would be sponsored by community members. On the front lawn of Kings Park High School, a long twenty-five day. Um, my my guess is that that line will extend around the corner and go up Lawrence. Um, and also donate seven flags at RJO. Where we have the existing nine eleven memorial. That one of our Eagle Scout candidates, Frank Segreto from Troop Five Thirty-nine, is going to be working on this summer. And the flags at RJO with total seven. To to recognize the seven fallen members of the community that passed away on nine eleven. Um, included in the agenda tonight. Um, on on the public side, everybody can can view this if you go to the agenda on the website, is a a flyer. And a um donation form where community members can sponsor a flag. And Serena and Eileen, through Kings Park Salutes, are going to collect those donations. And work with the district to make those flags uh come to fruition and get them installed. And they would be displayed annually around nine eleven, Veterans Day, and Memorial Day each spring. Um, I know that Serena and Eileen, um, are are on the call tonight. And uh, I wanted to ask you if it was anything that I that I didn't mention, if you'd like to unmute and uh. And and touch on that now, feel free to do so.
No, I I thank you. I think you did an amazing job um presenting that, so we have nothing to add. But I do wanna just thank you for giving us the opportunity.
Uh, you're 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 both very welcome and and I, of course, wanna thank the board. Um, the board has been well aware that we've been working on this and they've been incredibly supportive. As they always are of of our uh community members and our veterans and our first responders. Um, and certainly your your effort to bring this from uh concept to fruition and reality.
Yes, the board, the board really appreciates all your efforts. Um, this is just such such a wonderful donation that that you're making. Uh, so thank you very much for all of your time and efforts.
Thank you.
Mrs. Nell, I I'd just like to say, uh, that I hope that a number of people, uh, support. Uh, the Kings Park Salutes for a number of reasons. Uh, the seven, seven names that are listed on the monument at RJO. Uh, in this room, many of us knew some of them, if not all of them, uh, personally. Second, with uh two sons in the military, um, it's difficult to talk. Second, with two sons in the military, it's difficult at times, but they're, they're out there serving the country. And third, I just shout out to Serena Barberite, formerly Serena Foley, fifth row, third seat, super class. So hello there.
Mister Jay, I love that. The fact that you know exactly where I sat.
Exactly. Never forget it.
You're amazing. Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Thank you all. Okay. So moving on to disposal of equipment, as per district policy, all disposals must be approved by the board. I will make a motion to approve.
A second.
All those in favor? Result of the Board of Education authorizes the disposal of the following equipment. The Director of Technology and Data Systems is requesting permission to dispose of non usable iPods. Which are in excess of ten years old, not secure and unable to update the current version of Apple's operating system. Next is acceptance of recommendation to add verified vendors to the approved district vendor list. As per district policy, all vendors must be approved by the board before any payment can be made. I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Result of the Board of Education accepts the recommendation to add verified new vendors to the approved district vendor list per the attached documentation. Next is acceptance of internal audit reports and corrective action plans submitted by Serene and Associates LLP. Mrs. Mann.
Good evening. This resolution accepts the internal audit reports completed by Serene and Associates for this fiscal year. The reports are a review of special education revenues and expenditures, as well as the follow up reports issued to the. Follow up reports for previous reports issued to the Board of Education. These reports are presented at our audit committee meeting by Serene and Associates at our April meeting. It should be noted that the district's corrective action plan responses are also included within these reports.
Thank you, Mrs. Mann. Do you have any questions from the board? I'll make a motion to approve. A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Result of the Board of Education accepts the following internal audit reports submitted by Serene and Associates LLP and included corrective action plan. Review of special education reviews and expenditures, follow up reports issued to the Board of Education. Next is acceptance of recommendation to appoint board and labor counsel, bond counsel, fiscal advisor. Architect and construction management commencing with the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year. Mrs. Mann.
Yes, thank you. This resolution accepts the recommendation to appoint providers for five areas of professional services. A request for proposal was completed for legal counsel, bond counsel, fiscal advisor, architect and construction management.
Thank you, Mrs. Mann. Are there any questions from the board? I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Result of the Board of Education approves the recommendation to make the following appointments commencing with the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year. As a result of requests for proposals received on April eighth, twenty twenty one, per the attached documentation. Board and label, Board and Labor Council Services, Ingham and Smith, LLP. Bond Counsel, Hawkins, Delafield and Wood, LLP. Fiscal Advisor, CMA Capital Markets Advisors. Architect, H two M Architects and Engineers, Construction Management, Park East Construction Corp. Next is authorization to sign health service agreements with Manhasset. UFSD, Three Village Central School District and Northport, East Northport. UFSD for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year. Dr. Colby Rooney.
Good evening, everyone. The following agreements will provide health services for students who are parentally placed in private schools. Located within the Manhasset and Northport, East Northport Union Free School Districts, as well as the Three Village Central School District.
Thank you, Dr. Colby Rooney. Any questions from the board? I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Result of the Board of Education approves the following health service agreements for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one year. Per the attached documentation. Manhasset, UFSD, one thousand two hundred and forty six dollars and eighteen cents. Northport, East Northport, UFSD, twenty six thousand five hundred and seventy nine dollars and fifty two cents. And Three Village, CSD, four thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars and three cents. Next is authorization to sign contracts with service providers for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year. Dr. Colby Rooney.
Thank you. The contracts provided this evening will provide nursing services for a student within the district. We just want to bring note to the fact that there is a two thousand nineteen, twenty contract included in this. That's a result of a delay in receiving the contract due to the emergency closure.
Thank you, Dr. Colby Rooney. Any questions from the board? I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Result of the Board of Education hereby gives the board president permission to sign the attached contracts. With the following service provider for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty and the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school years. Renata Fontalvo RN for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty and Renata Fontalvo RN for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year. Next is acceptance of CSC meeting recommendations. Dr. Colby Rooney.
Thank you. The following will include minutes from sixty seven committee on special education meetings. That were held between the dates of January seventh through May fourth.
Thank you, Dr. Colby Rooney. Any questions from the boards? I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the attached individualized educational programs, IEPs. From January seventh, twenty twenty one to May fourth, twenty twenty one, sixty seven in total.
Comment, please? I'd just like to thank Dr. Colby Rooney, especially in these unprecedented times for the work that you do for our students. So very appreciated for a very vulnerable group of individuals. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next is vote to approve, not approve the Nassau Suffolk School Board Association proposed budget. And slate of officers and members of the executive committee for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year. Dr. Egan.
So one, one thing that may not be so obvious for the public is that behind the scenes. Boards of education are connected with each other on Long Island through the Nassau Suffolk School Boards Association. It's a very active group where school board presidents and vice presidents and board members will often communicate and share ideas. And typically they have a dinner. At which time the budget and the slate of officers for the following year will be approved. That dinner never happened, so the Nassau Suffolk School Boards has asked that boards of education put this on their agenda. And formally approve it so that they can move forward.
Okay, so are there any questions from the board? I will make a motion to approve. A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Whereas Nassau Suffolk School Boards Association has submitted its proposed twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two budget. And proposed twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two slate of officers and members of the executive committee. For the approval of its member boards, the Kings Park Central School District Board of Education authorizes the district clerk. To report the outcome of the votes and notify Nassau Suffolk School Boards Association of the results. Be it resolved that the Nassau Suffolk School Boards Association proposed budget for the twenty twenty one, twenty. Twenty two school year as accepted by NISB's Executive Committee, be and hereby is approved. Be it resolved that the Nassau Suffolk School Boards Association proposed twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two slate of officers and members of the executive committee. As presented by NISB's Nominating Committee, be and hereby is approved. Next is authorization to add flyers, to add organizations to the flyer distribution list for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year. As per district policy, all flyers must be approved by the board before email distribution. I will make a motion to approve.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Result of the organizations listed below receive approval of the Board of Education to be included in email distribution of flyers in the school district for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year. Barbara Shaw, fundraiser, Smith Town, summer program, Kings Park Salutes, Kings Park High School, Field of Honor. And we are up to special reports and announcements from the superintendent.
Okay, a cou- couple of quick updates for the board. We, we did begin enrollment in our K eight summer instructional support program. We already had a hundred students that had registered as of yesterday. So that, that number is growing, which is good. So we, we will be able to support a good number of students. This coming summer in that in person program that'll be housed over at William T. So that's excellent news. Spring is certainly in the air. We're excited that our spring sports are up and running. And our, our calendar is now full of end of the year events and celebrations. Each one of those end of the year events and celebrations is going to look a little different than it has in the past. But we are going to be able to pull off just about every one of those typical events that we would have at the end of the year. Including field day on the elementary level. So just as one example. I want to just highlight two William T. Middle, WTR middle school students in sixth grade, Avery Brown and Catherine Cryuski. Mrs. Moreno and I had lunch with these two students last week. These two students are amazing. They came across an older woman. Walking on Main Street in Kings Park who was a little disoriented and walked her to. The Kings Park Fire Department where the woman was reunited with members of her family and safely returned to home. So again, I wanted to thank these two amazing sixth grade students over at William T. For their quick thinking and their bravery. It's Mental Health Awareness Month and if you're, if you're following the, the calendar, hopefully you were, you were pondering. Self-help this week and making a list of who, what you might be grateful for. So we follow along with our Mental Health Awareness Month and we encourage you to also do that at home. We have our student vote that's also coming up between now and May eighteenth. We're going to close the polls at about five PM on May eighteenth. Students will not be voting in person in the library this year. They can simply use the link provided. And we're just trying to promote civic awareness and the fact that. Parents and residents and students can do their civic duty and give us some feedback on four very important questions. If you have nothing to do this coming Saturday night, the weather's supposed to be great. And there's going to be a drive in movie sponsored by Rotary at William T. Rogers Middle School at eight PM. If you go to either comac rotary.org or kingsparkrotary.org, you can purchase a ticket for your vehicle. For this coming Saturday, drive in movie. As you might have suspected, we got a few phone calls today. On the front page of Newsday was that SUNY, CUNY and Host University will be requiring. Student vaccinations for in-person instruction in the fall. This was an announcement that the governor made earlier this week. Just know that any vaccination required for public school attendance. Requires a change in law, which would need to, to happen in either the state assembly or the senate. And then move on and be approved by the governor. So that is not something that the school district has control over. But if you do feel strongly about that one way or the other. I do encourage residents to give their elected officials a call. That would be either Michael Fitzpatrick in the assembly or Mario Matarra in the New York State Senate. And. I believe that is my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Egan. Anyone have any questions or comments?
Comments?
Great.
Uh.
I have a question.
Sure, go ahead, go ahead.
Mine's very short. Um, we have so much going on here in the district and. Tonight happens to be one of my favorite board nights when we recognize our students and their hard work. But they didn't learn it just at school. They didn't learn it just at home. I love to say it takes the village and I always have and I always will. This is a great community, so thank you to the teachers and the parents that helped us to recognize those students tonight. Love hearing every one of them. I also want to give a special thanks to Dr. Corzano. I know this year has not been easy. And now that we're doing summer school for everyone and putting together and working on those summer school schedules. It's just another added layer on top of your job details. So people really don't understand all the extra that everyone is doing. But with everybody doing all the extras. We are making the district run forward for our kids. And I am just so proud to be part of this district. So thank you everyone from the bottom of my heart. Who does everything to make this district what it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. That was just a great sentiment. Yeah, definitely something that, you know, we all feel. And Mrs. DeFord is right. It's so much, so much has gone into this school year. Everyone has worked so very hard. Our faculty, our staff, the custodians, the maintenance people. Transportation, I'm sure I'm forgetting people, but the whole district has worked together to get us through this year. And I think we've done a very good job and appreciate everyone's cooperation and support in this.
Let me go back to that last slide at the end of Dr. Egan's presentations. Each piece of the puzzle, this is important to get in the picture.
Absolutely. And, and you know what? Aside from everyone I just mentioned, it's definitely the parents. There's a lot of, there's a lot of extra work on your part. To bring you, you know, to get your children through this school year. We're almost at the end and. You know, I, I just can't tell you how much I hope that September is going to be. As normal as it can be. So let's just work towards that goal right now.
I think we're already doing that, Mrs. Nally.
Yes, we are.
Along those lines, I'd like to send out appreciation to our nurses. If I'm not mistaken, last week we had Nurses Appreciation Day and we do appreciate our nurses in Kings Park. Especially in view of the pandemic and all the testing that had to be done. Second, make sure you go to Bubba's. You gotta get some flowers, the flowers and plants. Help to support the Kings Park High School PFO. It's one of the major fundraisers, okay? They got some great stuff. Okay, so decorate the house. Finally, Memorial Day, Monday, May thirty first. And please remember those who, as President Abraham Lincoln stated, gave the last full measure of devotion. And consider that freedom is not free while understanding that their deaths were not in pain. In addition, it's imperative that you thank a veteran. Thank you.
All right, we will move on to public comments. The Board of Education will hear additional public comments. Speakers must state their first and last names to the district clerk. And then address their comments to the board. Comments by any individual may not exceed three minutes. A visible timer will be used to monitor this time limit. The public comment sections of this meeting will not exceed thirty minutes in total. And fans to all speakers who exceed three minute limit and do not finish when asked. Invited to all speakers who exceed three-minute limit and do not finish when asked will have their microphone muted. Due to confidentiality concerns, the board does not permit speakers to raise issues concerning a specific student or a specific personnel matter. Such concerns should be presented to the superintendent after the board meeting. In addition, please note that the board will take no action at tonight's meeting. So if anyone has any public comments or a question, please, um, click on your icon. Caterina.
Hi, Caterina Panino. Um, I'm just wondering about the universal pre-K. Is that just for this coming school year? They're allowing us to have money to do it or is that gonna be something that's gonna be in years to come that could keep doing it?
Great, great question and, and thank you, Caterina. Um, we, we do hope that it is, it is not a one-shot deal. Um, there does seem to be a, a, a focus and an initiative both on the State Education Department level and in the senate and the assembly, um, uh, in Albany on, on the, on the state budgeting level. So we would hope that that would be a sustainable source of, um, UPK funding. Um, so we're, we're moving forward with that in mind. And, uh, we're, we're hopeful that we're gonna be able to offer fifty-one slots next year and then hopefully that will continue into the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Pagel. Mr. Pagel, can you unmute yourself?
We, we can't hear you, Mr. Pagel. If you unmute, um, we, we would love to hear from you. It's good to see you this evening. Can't do it.
No, we can't, we cannot mute you from here. Um, if, if you look at the bottom left-hand corner of your screen, do you see a microphone that says unmute underneath it? If you click on that.
I guess I'm unmuted. Well, though I'm, finally got back. I got a question, uh, that just came to my mind, uh, about this, uh, UPK program. Um, if you have an other, a group coming into the school system, into our, use our buildings for that particular program, do, are, do they have to get any special clearance through you to meet the criteria that our school has for having people coming in?
They, they do, um, it'll, Mr. Pagel, it'll be very similar to like the town of Smithtown that does aftercare in our buildings, um, and, and so on and so forth. Um, the, the agency will need to submit an RFP and then the district will evaluate if we get more, more than one RFP and then there'll be an actual contract with that agency. Um, so there will be some, some rules of, um, engagement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, do we have any other questions or comments? All right, so I think that is the end of public comments and we will move on to important dates. We have Tuesday, June eighth is our next, oh, I'm sorry, Tuesday, May eighteenth is our annual budget vote and election, six AM to nine PM in Kings Park High School back gym. And then Tuesday, June eighth is our next Board of Education meeting at seven thirty PM via Zoom. And, um, I neglected, Tuesday, May thirteenth is Meet the Candidate Night at eight PM via Zoom. So I will make a motion to adjourn. We're not doing exactly a session, right? Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, and have a good night.
Night.